We have, because we rent space to a CAPS collaborative program, which has multiple handicapped students that attend here. And their ages are probably, what, three to five?
They're preschool to grade six.
Yeah. So, at any rate, they have approximately three, three and a half classrooms, because they have OT, PT, as well as some other classroom space. So, the classroom space that we had sort of available to us, CAPS collaborative has. Do we have any other, we have two bookrooms that we could consolidate to one? They're kind of like mini library kind of things?
One of the bookrooms, half of it is rented out to CAPS.
Okay.
And then the other one, the other half of it is a special ed room.
Okay. So, do we have, like, if we, obviously, if we remove the CAPS collaborative agreement that we have with them, that would loosen up probably four rooms.
Four rooms.
The wing that we were just sort of wandering around the other day, which is where the art room and is the music room and the kindergartens, while that's the most obvious, because of its location, that we would have an interest in, that is, obviously, our larger classrooms for our kindergartens. So, our kindergartens would go into the CAPS collaborative, I would assume. I don't know where you'd move people, but we'd have to do some shifting around. Currently, CAPS collaborative compensates us at $40,000 for the use of facility. That is a fee that is negotiated with the collaborative that we're, not only we're, but that many schools are involved with. It's $10,000 a year per classroom. And since they sort of use a half of one, they give us the $40,000 for that, which we utilize primarily to pay custodial salary that works in the school. So, obviously, we have space, but I would have to, like ASAP, work with CAPS and tell them that we cannot accommodate that program any longer. Because if we keep the program, we couldn't entertain, we don't have any classroom space available. And in last, in the summer, when, I think, Rayanne probably talked with Jess Bennett and myself, or at least Jess and Jess talked to me, "Do you have classroom space?" We had no classroom space, because we gave it to the CAPS. Their contract expires in June, and obviously, they'll have to find space. So, I would love to be able to give them, you know, information pretty quickly and say, "Look, it looks like there's going to be a different way in which we're going to utilize our building, and we don't have space to rent." Because, obviously, that, they need to find another place to accommodate them. I'm hopeful that they might consider, and we're sort of on the outskirts of the CAPS collaborative catchment area. And I wish I could move them into Barry, because Barry, we have 11 classrooms available there. We definitely could house them without difficulty. But it's another, probably, six or seven miles to Ruggles Lane, and six or seven miles back. And many of those children are from OCAM and Leominster, Westminster. A few are our district.
We have four.
Yeah. I don't know what towns the children are from.
They're from Barry.
Oh, that's good. So, we got a couple of kids that wouldn't have to travel, but, you know what I mean?
There's two from here and two from there.
Yeah, because of the fact that, obviously, they like to be able to just get off with two, zip down 68, and they're here. Obviously, heading out to Barry is another seven or eight miles that they probably don't want to do. They may find other space, but I'd like to be able to tell them as soon as it's practical, because, obviously, they have some work to do to relocate those children.
So, can I ask a question? What, kind of a number we hear bandied around a lot is that the school is 60% full. And that may be the case with students. But if we're really only dealing with a delta of, what, four classrooms? What hap, I'm sure that when the school was 100% full, which at one time it was...
100% plus.
You needed more than those four classrooms. So, how did the school get by if we're only dealing with four classrooms? So, if we, if you're at CAPS...
Well, we didn't have the leveled libraries. We didn't have some library rooms that are, or some classrooms that are now designated and turned into what we called leveled libraries. And I'll ask Sheila and Jerry to talk more about what those are and why we have those. Obviously, that's part of our English language arts program. It's a critical piece of, sort of, resource that our kids need. And so, that's basically what those rooms have been used for. When the school was built, it was built to house three grades, okay? First grade, three first grades, three second grades, et cetera, okay? It was built only to hold two, okay, kindergarten classrooms, because we only had half-day kindergartens when this was built. And so, we were able to accommodate four sections of kindergarten, because they only came half-time. So, half of the week, A group came, and half of the week, A B group would come. So, we only had two rooms for them. Now, we have, obviously, two full days of, I should say, full week for each kindergarten grade. So, they take a whole classroom each. So, if in the old days, we only had two classroom sections, it only would have been one classroom for kindergarten. So, that's what it was built for. And, obviously, for a while, there's no question, we had very large classes, especially at the upper levels, 28s, 29s, in Hubbardston. And you, not you, but the town, I'm going to say, in the early 80s, you were the fastest-growing town around. I mean, it was amazing how it sort of exploded. And we had a very small elementary school that really, you know, forced us to build a new school pretty quickly. So, that is why we have, we had some other uses of some of those classrooms. But, so, that would be the four that CAPS have in the library that we made the leveled one.
And a language-based classroom.
And then, oh, yes, we have a special ed program as well. So, that's a substantially separate. So, we've taken six classrooms and do other things with them. Four of which we can take and get off, you know what I mean, through not renting to CAPS collaborative. But two, I don't know, we can't take the substantial, we could move the substantially separate program to Barry. We do have room to do that. We can move that substantially separate program to Barry. And, but the leveled library, I don't think there's much we can do with that. But that's Sheila and...
Yeah, I mean, I can show them, so they might have a better idea of what they look like. But we house a lot of books, because that's our reading program now. And so, we know that if we can get kids to read the genre that they like, that they'll read a lot. And so, we've invested a lot of time and money in building up those libraries for kindergarten all the way up through sixth grade. So, we have a place to house all those books.
So, we're just trying to fix other problems we have.
Oh, sure, I understand.
And I know. But I was, as part of the task force in walking around a lot of the buildings, I'm not going to use the exact same term that you use, I can't recall. But you did, and I don't remember how much of it was here, if any, because we're talking about, you know, rooms now, is teacher sprawl? Like, if they've got the space, they'll go take it?
They will.
Right. So, is that something, separate from the library stuff?
That I would say is probably not very evident here, because we've rented space, and we also have the substantially separate language-based program, which we could move. But we rented the three classrooms, so it really, and now, Ruggles Lane, all 11 classrooms that are empty, okay, were filled last year. This year, we closed them. So, you can't even, so we don't clean them, we don't lock. Otherwise, teacher sprawl will take over. So, we're trying very hard to use fewer custodial hours at Ruggles Lane. And Clara, you may want to, or Jake, can talk a little bit about the fact that we did close wings in the high school, middle school, where we closed some wings also.
At Ruggles Lane, we had a retirement coming in October. So, we have not replaced that person. So, we, by closing those rooms, the night shift is down to two. We have another retirement in January. And we're going to be shifting a custodian out of New Braintree to go there, because, obviously, Ruggles Lane can't have one custodian at night. And New Braintree is going to run on less hours. And the high school, we took on other pieces and closed off.
We shifted around a lot of classrooms.
We shifted a lot. We shifted all the high school rooms to close off the wings there. So, we, I don't know, I think it's around nine rooms there that we have. We don't, we are using them for testing. I'm not saying they're totally closed. When MCAS starts, we're going to open them for that, because it just makes sense. It takes a lot less shifting, so.
Enrollment, I mean, expect it to continue to drop. I mean, that's, you know, and, you know, based upon Mr. Stoddard's comment, you know, we throw around 60, 62%, or whatever. So, is there any innovative reconfiguration that we could do to make space available? I mean, that would be my concern.
Nobody's going to like it. Okay, just as long as everybody knows, parents aren't going to like moving students in different places. If we wanted to make an accommodation in Hubbardston, obviously, if CAPS collaborative said, "We're just really not interested, and we'll go to, you know, Westminster," but Westminster can't host them, that's why they ended up with us. If they, for example, if we said to you, "Look, we'll take the sixth grade and the fifth grade out of Hubbardston," or just the sixth, and move them to Barry, because we've got plenty of room over there. Obviously, I would suspect I would upset some parents, but potentially, maybe not some kids. But ultimately, kids are fine. It's sometimes just, it's a big shock. Then, we could certainly free up space for, you know, a shared space. We could absolutely do that.
It is from the board perspective. And when we keep hearing, again, I'm just going to go back to, we keep hearing, you know, 60%, 60%, 60%, and then, and we're looking at...
Are you talking about 60% of Hubbardston Elementary School being available? Or 60% of the district?
No, 60% of Hubbardston, so 40% of the school is empty. That's what we, that's the numbers we hear.
You mean, of this, of this building's empty?
Of this building.
I wondered, Dr. Stoddard, if, when they did that configuration, if they took the art room and the music room, and maybe even the library, and considered that as space? Because if 100 families happen to move in tomorrow, I would have to accommodate them, and I might have to say, art would go on a cart. You know, our teacher would have to go into the classrooms, and that would have to be a classroom. And the music room would, you know, also have to go on a cart. And I'm wondering if that's what they did, if they just did square footage.
It's likely that's the case. I don't think so. Just based on the conversation we're having here, it just doesn't add up from what we hear to what we hear.
Yeah, happy to take you on a tour.
What's the enrollment capacity here?
Right now, we have 320.
Enrollment capacity?
500, I think.
500, so that's 60%. So, that would lead you to, that would lead, lead some of us to believe that 20% of the classrooms, or 40% of the classrooms, would be vacant.
But if you only have 21 instead of 28 in a class, that's, you're still utilizing that class, and you've got 25% less in the class.
And with the special needs children that are in the language-based program, what do we have, four or five students in that room?
Oh, he has a language-based classroom.
Okay, and then, and certainly, I don't know the exact numbers for the, you know, the integrated preschool from CAPS, because that's...
Yes, so they have approximately 20 students total.
In four different classrooms.
Now, I know, I mean, my girls go here, and they absolutely think it's great to be with the CAPS kids and read to them and everything else. But do you see, I'm sorry, I already know the answer to the problem with it. But do you see that if the CAPS program left, it would be a detriment to the school? The way, I mean, on a day-to-day basis, when we see the kids interact?
Yeah. You know, I couldn't be any happier with the way that they've integrated into Hubbardston Center School and the way that our children have embraced them. And I think that there's something so valuable for that lesson that they're having. I know that any of the children in this school will never look at somebody disabled in a derogatory way, because they know their names, they come into their classrooms. You can't put a price tag on what they've been able to learn from having that program come in here. And if you talk to the OT and the PT people that work with those kids, they said that they've advanced their milestones, because they see our kids walking around and doing things, and they think, "Wow, I want to get out of this wheelchair. I want to walk around too." And so, I think it's just been mutually beneficial to have them here. And there's, you know, there's no price tag you can put on that. It's really been a great blending of the two schools together.
Also, OT, PT, from, it's taken a huge change. They used to be out in the open. They no longer can be. They're actually taking space now in classrooms, something they didn't do before. So, that's, those are rooms across the district. OT, PT has actually taken rooms, because they can't, they used to be up here in the mess, and they no longer can be. They have to be in enclosed space.
So, from a town perspective, I mean, we're certainly not looking to change the educational mission of the school in any way. We have a lot of facility needs in Hubbardston. We have buildings that are decrepit, and the chances that we're ever going to get into the building in the near future is slim to none. So, the way, I guess, I'll just speak for all of us. I guess, the way that, what we're coming from is, you know, the last year, two years, you know, we hear a lot of chatter that Hubbardston Center School's on the closing list, and the school's only 60% full. And that's where we're coming from, that if we can help the situation out, which would help Hubbardston out, because we have a building here that if we can get space in, keep the school more full, contribute to the cost of the power and the, all that other stuff in the building.
And keep it open.
And keep it open. I mean, that's the best, it's a win-win for the town, it's a win-win for the school. But I guess what I'm hearing tonight is, the school is full.
Well, it's full with, you know, space that we're renting. Admittedly, that certainly, you know, there's a, you know, there's an educational benefit to our, renting space to them, but there's certainly a financial benefit to having this conversation. I would tell you that when Cheryl was asked to say, "How many square feet are in the school? How many kids could you put in every room?", what she did was just, as you pointed out, every class was going to be X and Y, and we looked at the demographics and a decline in enrollment over time. And like she said, over time, over time, it's not tomorrow, but over time, you can probably fit the entire district in the middle high school complex. I'm not saying that we should do that, but there's a, there's a conversation about that. There's no question that we've had a conversation about pulling sixth grades out of the elementary schools. If we do that, we exacerbate only the fact that the elementary schools aren't completely used. Now...
How much would that free up, though, at this school?
At this school, two classrooms.
Big classrooms, though, right? Are they big classrooms?
The upstairs?
Yeah.
They're not that...
Okay, what I was getting at is whether or not the, I know you ideally want to make the CAPS upstairs.
Can't do that yet.
So, I was going to cut them in half.
But we can reorganize, you know, where the students are. There's no question that if we were to talk about a shared space possibility with the task force and consolidation, I'm of a mind, we are not going to close any schools in this district. I'm at those meetings. I'm at the town meetings. I get the word. They will not, they will not, over dead bodies, I think, is what they say. And I understand that communities have a center, and it's often the school building. And so, I would tell you that I think all of us are going to be probably not doing the jobs we're doing now, and those schools are still going to be open. And so, when you look at that, you say, "Can we move students around? Can we move some students around in shared space?" Because there's no question, you have needs, and we could accommodate them by moving some kids, just some, to Ruggles Lane. But parents, I'm guessing, won't want to do that either. One thing, that's not town meeting action, the school committee could do that. But I'm guessing that they will be very reluctant to really come in and upset a community's idea about what their school is.
So, really, when realistically, if the town, what I'm hearing then is that the town needs or wants to push the issue to take over some rooms, really, we're looking at getting rid of the CAPS program from Hubbardston Center.
Oh, yes. Well, I would hope not getting rid of it from the district.
No, but moving the CAPS program out of it is definitely the only way we could be more education for the sixth grade and fifth grade to move.
Understand.
You can advocate.
Understand, though, that other schools, other schools with...
I want to tell your kids.
Other schools within the CAPS, because this, that, that group of students were at the dumpiest, most horrible place on that...
On School Street.
Yeah, that School Street School in Gardner.
In the basement.
People didn't even want to send, and they shouldn't have wanted to send their children there. And so, this has been such an upgrade for them. But it's not Hubbardston's, you know, problem. It's, if we could get them to go to Barry, we could, we could really, we could maybe do both things. And I'm not adverse to bringing that up. But that would give us three and a half rooms, and we could potentially squeeze out maybe that level, and it could be four rooms.
So, when we're talking about moving the fifth and sixth grade out to, are we talking about the middle school or Ruggles Lane?
Ruggles Lane.
So, they, couldn't they, couldn't the middle school absorb, couldn't they then become part of the middle school?
Well, if I have to move the entire district to the middle school, then all I've done is make, instead of 11 classrooms empty at Ruggles Lane, I mean, pick a number, just two or three classrooms there now, in sixth grade and fifth grade. So, I would take five more classrooms. So, I really haven't accomplished anything, other than making the elementary schools even fewer kids, you know? And so, yeah, we can, we can, if we moved sixth grade to the, to the middle school, I would suspect it would be in the student's best interest and the faculty's best interest to have an educational reason to do so. To do it just to make some more space probably isn't the best reason to do it. But I think if we keep, you know, because we're really kind of committed right now to our curriculum program, which is really, at this point, kind of K to 6, in the way we're organized, with intervention modeling and so forth. So, to move sixth grade right now to the middle school would not be prudent, because we don't have the supports that those kids need at the middle school.
But moving them from here to Ruggles Lane, then to the middle school, then, I mean, that's a lot of moving.
I agree.
That's, that's, I mean, the research shows, the less transition, the better.
Absolutely. Then we thought about, there's no question that if we, because we heard lots of people talking about, you know, "There's not enough room at Monty Tech. We should do some vocational programming and so forth at our school." Well, we could do that if, now, this is a new concept, we push the seventh grade back to the elementaries. Okay? Freeing up more lab space, so we can create the kind of vocational programming that our kids could access, because, you know, there's a very small number of kids who can get to go to Monty Tech. And Monty Tech has, you know, but there is some Chapter 74 money that is available and some grant work that we could do if we, so, we looked at it and said, "We could do that." But I'm making a better educational system, but I'm not helping you. And I mean, I know, and I, and listen, I wish we could just, CAPS would be amenable. I mean, we could move them to Barry. Hubbardston loses, but at least our district would still benefit from the opportunity to interface with those students.
How many students in CAPS?
20. In the CAPS program? About 20.
And it ebbs and flows, because we do have some kids...
But we do realize, we send special ed students hither and yah for outplacement.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Man, what would you say the minimum number of rooms?
Mark, it's not our decision.
No, I, but we do it.
I think that wing is important, because this, right after the door, is an easily accessible room for the task collector and the town.
Want to take a walk down?
Yeah. And, uh, could you just show, you know, identify kindergarten rooms and so forth? And the fact that we could, we can switch them around. We could, we can, we can move kids within this building easily. Obviously, we could, we could move some students and do some shared space and give CAPS here. But that's, like you say, I'm standing away from the two where you move the fifth and sixth grade. It would, and if, trust me, and in six months, the kids would be fine. Parents would still be saying they had a run over, you know?
It seems like there's a fair contingent of parents, just from being part of this over the last year, who think the sixth graders are ready.
Well, I think, I think, I think... I concur that they're ready. We're not. We're not ready unless we involve and really put some effort into expanding and pushing forwards, which would be a great thing, those intervention programs that we have in place.
Ready to go to middle school or another elementary school?
I don't know. I felt like I'd been hearing over this, not hearing to go to middle school.
I agree. I mean, I come from a district where fifth grade starts middle school, so it's, I mean, so, if you're talking sixth, I mean, it's getting up there.
But you're right, you don't want to go K to four, and do five and six.
Six, and then go 78, and then now, and then, you know? That's a lot of transitioning.
It's a lot of transitioning.
You want to take a walk down to kindergarten?
I mean, the thing, I have a meeting on Wednesday at CAPS, and I can certainly bring up the conversation about, you know, whether or not they have them in. And then, maybe we can look at, you know, if we make that space work. Well, the thing is, it does, we're in the driver's seat. We can say. And they've had a difficult time finding really good, high-quality space for those children. Barry has it, you have it, Barry's just a little further away than I think they want it. But, you know what? See, these rooms are really very narrow and so forth. Yes.
This is the upper house.
Upper elementary CAPS. So, we can go right through the next one. Cheryl, you want to? This is the lower room. This is elementary, right?
So, the CAPS for school are in these two rooms?
Well, there's one more down the hall, and then, there's another one down the other way.
Oh, yeah, on the right, right?
Did you go down the first second grade room? Your other right. And then, there's another room.
So, so would you, I don't want to hold you to this, but if we were to use that wing, would you take these as kindergarten rooms?
Yeah, because the bathrooms are across the hall.
Okay. And currently, the bathrooms are in their classrooms?
In their classrooms, yeah.
Are these rooms, they look a little smaller than current kindergarten rooms?
They are, yeah. You can tell when you go in them, you know, they're half size.
So, you'll take, show us the rest of the CAPS then? And then, you can show us the language-based classrooms, language...
Yeah, I can, you know, laterally, the school committee can move the language-based program to Barry.
So, this is the lower elementary, like, say, first, second, and third?
Equipment they have.
Yes, they do. They are always just putting around.
What other services do they use of the districts besides what they pay for, which is utilities and all that sort of stuff?
You mean, in terms of, like, OT?
Personnel or anything?
Every studio does the same.
They have their own speech people, educational...
Nurses.
But, yes, some of the, some of the kids are so compromised.
So is that...
And then, they have their own old-time nurses.
And then, the other half room space is with that library thing. Then, we could consolidate if we had to.
Yep. Oh, wait, there's a bus here, please.
So, you didn't go, you did graduate while you were in high school. Okay, yeah.
And then, clean that before John hung. If you're back in Jasper. If you're in the language base or whatever, we can, we can make this work with CAPS out.
They take it out.
So, this is the, this is where, when we had looked through, these were the doors that we had thought that this would be a nice separation to the school, because you can put in doors that nobody can get into the school. And it's a nice, already, break in there.
Yeah, the only other problem would be the stairwell.
Stairwell, we have to do something.
How to build a landing, because you have to have so much feet. Are we okay with fire exits, though?
The stairway's going to be a little bit harder, because there's a code. You're going to have a 40-inch landing before the door. So, we'd have to, the door would actually come on the hallway a bit. Depends what the building's spread to tell. But there's a landing, 40-inch landing, then push back, so he can come out safe to the fire, and he can still come down the stairs above that door.
I'd imagine these doors would be the same. You couldn't get in this way, or you could get out this way.
Alarming may be an issue, how their building is alarmed.
Is that a conference room type thing? Yeah. Yeah, I'm watching them, the desks are sound.
I don't want my back. And then, your next tier is your court accessories, your building, apartment, courthouse. So, they would keep me in here with the town. And then, that room could be the town administrator, court selection meeting room, and administrative office. There's a kitchen issue. So, they can come in, so they'll be able to cook. So, if, I mean, they can find another way of producing the meals.
Oh, okay. Right, yeah. Now, this is...
Why can't they cook, it's just fireproof?
No, Jake, I think you said something.
Jake, he's there, he's outside.
A lot of good things happened.
He's loving first grade. He loves Mr. Skippioni this year.
I haven't met her yet. I have to be risky. Sheila, you all have a question? So, there's no...
He's loving first grade, he loves Mr. Skippionia this year.
I haven't met her yet, I haven't been. So there's another room up here, which would be tax collector, if you were to do this, tax collector. And, um, town clerk, right when you come in the door. Oh, okay, the kitchen thing, yeah.
So this building's a wooden frame building, unsprinkled, so that changes the laws on cooking, and, uh, you know, we'd have to add more sheetrock, uh, you'd have to add hoods over the stuff, so everything falls outside.
You don't have to down that door there.
This, then the building is, overabundance of smoke detectors across us more than the high school, the door, testing and cleaning.
So when the building was built in the nineties, there was no sprinkle?
No, no, with the power system and the housing.
Oh, sure.
Didn't have to be retrofitted, huh?
It did, no, no.
But the newer building does have sprinkle?
No.
That's true.
And if I can just break for a minute, I asked you not to take pictures of the walls, so don't look too closely, but behind you is our dad of all. Right over here. All of the blue are above grade level, all of the green is on grade levels, the yellow is approaching, and just a couple of reds that we're working on. That's what this room is for. We bring the interventionist in here, and we eat, and we put together less, and it's specifically designed for the skilled deficit, and then we go. Pardon heavy, I don't.
I saw this in the other buildings too, right? Everybody's doing this?
Yeah.
My kids love intervention.
Isn't it?
They think it's the best.
They do, they're really, yeah. So, um, so everybody gets intervention, whether or not you're up here or down here, it's just depending on the group, right? So we advance the kids that are really bright, give them some, you know, enrichment activities, and then we make the group smaller for the kids that have issues and work with them. So, but, um, so this room was storage, and we kind of cleaned it out because every district can, you know, every school has a room like this, but you want one. Yeah. We're proud of the work the teachers do.
So it really doesn't have, unlike the other schools where there was, room was closed off, there's really no rooms that don't have a use.
No, and I can show you, you know, because I, I think sometimes when you float those, like you said, sixty percent, you figure, I have these empty rooms that aren't being utilized for anything. I think this room was originally designed as a special ed room, and maybe as we shrunk, they just started putting stuff in it, you know?
That's what was special ed.
It was, yeah.
Yes, it was.
And also, we took one of the storerooms and created a conference room that became the CAFs nurse room.
Yeah, so that's.
So, so we really don't have storage here either. That is one of the problems in all the schools, is the storage, the lack of.
Yeah, so the, the idea that we had was that this would be the entrance for, for a town. We could use a, this room would be town clerk, tax collector, um, since it's the first room off, it's a smaller one, and then we would have those two classrooms, and there's an office or two on this side, and we wouldn't.
Well, we have store, we have a storeroom here, which I don't know where we go with all the chemicals and stuff.
That would be fine, because there would be so much room in here.
You wouldn't need those.
We wouldn't need it.
Okay.
That is one of the biggest problems in this school.
So would that be a room? That would be like town hall or tax collector. The main entrance there, and then this would be some offices, how would be some of the offices? Like, how many? Ran, how many total people do you think?
Seven. Uh, plus, plus we have assessors that come in, air source, and a town that comes in.
That's a lot. I wish we had normal-sized like stuff, like in, in town here, like, uh, because they have, I watch.
Yeah, and the, the, so we'd stop renting Breezy Hills, and we bring firemen to a family facility, and we make that their, their home base.
And then the library basement offices will all grow.
So if we, you know, the problem with libraries, we can't get grant money to even upgrade the boiler, which is, this is a shame, because sharing space with town, so if we get this now, goes to somebody, we're trying for years, get the town out of the library, the library's got a lot.
Drop through there unless we need grant money.
Oh yeah. Switch it, so we're out, we're out.
How many, would you have to get out of the wall?
Well, that's what I remember, Oldham, that one, like, fifty, fifty years ago, Oldham was getting winded, it was not, it was like booming, like just all.
The seven, total.
I mean, but it's the whole thing, the electrical system, the heating system, the roof needs to be done, and, you know, there's, there's tons of money available for the library, but we don't qualify as long as there's people, non-library people in the library, which is a dumb rule, but it's just the way it is. So this has been a perennial issue for the town, not just ops, I mean, this has been years and years and years of trying to figure out how we can get those people out of there.
Yeah, but no, so they didn't move last year.
And the Breezy Hill lease is eighteen thousand dollars a year?
It's eighteen thousand, six hundred this year, it was up to nineteen, two, five next year, so it keeps on going, two percent increase.
Yeah, plus fuel, right? Plus.
Well, we would have to pay for fuel.
Breezy Hill?
Somebody local.
It was, when it was available for sale.
Yeah.
District closed it that, and, um, instead of building in, you know, from the, from the original office, so we had to get out of Barry and go in. And so we looked at it, but it was so chucked up, you know, it just wasn't, it was just to us. And then that realty group must have come in and then it was like.
But there's, there's also some empty space right now in Breezy Hill.
Yeah, we have to.
Yeah, no.
We have to rent that, yeah.
There is some, there is some space up here, right? So if you guys went in and did something like, say, listen, we'd like to stay here, but we can't pay this amount of freight, you think they're, they're gonna give up instantly at eighteen thousand, or seventeen, or fifteen thousand to like, just, about a side hangout? Who's moving in?
Nobody.
Right, right, I mean, you understand my point, right?
Right, but at the same, at the same point, we renegotiated the lease this year, they also knew we had nowhere to go. So, you know, we, we didn't have much in the way of negotiating power either, because where are we gonna move Ram and Fireman?
Well, we still did a pretty good negotiating.
I think so.
All right, so here's, here's another question. Instead of taking over the whole hallway, there's another set of double doors that we can easily fix. Would, would, and Ryan, you probably answered this better, if taking over just that one room for tax collector and clerk, could we move those people out and reconfigure somehow the slave building or something to leave everyone in Breezy Hill, but get everyone out of the library basement and put, just use that door and that office for tax collector and stuff? So it's just across from the slave building? And then we can get?
It would be a tight squeeze.
Be tight.
Because you can't have a tax collector over here, because all the financial information's over the slave.
Okay.
So, and then, so tax, the town clerk could go there. Then we would have to move Board of Health building and assessors over in the slave building in that small space where the tax collector is. And so you're moving them from the library basement to a little area in slave room.
So one other question I, I have is, um, as far as like, like the tax, I mean, is that open to like, I mean, can anyone come or go as?
Yes, right now, the tax collector is easily accessible, she has a window, so when people come in and pay, they're right there. Same with the town clerk.
So how would, how would you monitor like security reason, like, so if like, just having, I mean, you just kind of don't want people wandering into the school like, like randomly, like?
Well, that door would be locked, so that you cannot access the school from this side.
Okay.
They can only access the school from the school side.
Well, we have all those doors, we, we have to fix as well, because all those access to the.
We have to block out the stairways too.
I mean, that would be definitely a concern.
Because it's still, he was the kindergarten place over here, so, yeah.
It's not just one door, so.
Right.
But certainly, not issues that can't be rolled through.
Oh, absolutely.
That's what I just said, yeah. The stairways themselves too.
The only, the only thing that I, I worry about, as all understanding going forward, is nobody's saving any money doing this. Okay, you might be saving some money, um, because you're not gonna build anything, but we're gonna lose forty thousand dollars that we've been paying a custodian there.
Well, we'll save eighteen thousand, six hundred, because we won't be paying the lease at least.
Okay, but what are you gonna pay here?
Well, we're, I think some of this is assuming that Barry would be receptive to, or they would be receptive to Barry, so I think there's just a bunch of balls up in the air at once here, so.
Well, but my concern is, if you take square footage out of the school, I can no longer say to Desi in my end-of-year reports, that it costs me X number of dollars for this and X number of dollars for that. I, you guys have to be able to pay a portion of the elec, I mean, we'd have to make up some numbers or come up with some way to calculate that. So I don't know if that's eighteen thousand dollars and it ends up being a wash, but it's nicer, nicer place to be.
But we're thinking long-term too, because this is what enrollment looks like.
No question.
So if there's certain eventuality about it anyway, is, you know, why not discuss it now?
Well, I, I, I agree, I just want us to all understand that.
Yep.
Um, I can talk with CAFs on Wednesday, because our board will meet, and, um, or I can just basically, because I really almost have to say, we're not gonna extend the contract, unless you go to Barry, because they really have to go look for space, because, and so then, um, the dice sort of cast. If they, if they're gonna hook up with somebody else, then we could end up with no CAFs and some empty rooms, and you don't want to come now. So my concern is just that, um, if we can, the sooner we can really make some hard and fast decisions that we're gonna live with, it really helps us.
And not to speak for Michael here, but I think some of us came into this sort of meeting thinking there was more than just the CAFs, more space than just the CAFs.
That's what sort of was.
To me, what we might have been led to believe. Right, and now that we're, you know, seeing that it's really not, we're, you know, trying to just process that.
But, but, I, we, we could, we could make this work with CAFs being either at Barry or out, and the library, and, and I don't have to move the special ed, substantially separate special education program to Barry as well, which is an ea, well, not, it's, you know, kids get, you know, adjusted to the school, but it's an easy move for us, it's a teacher and, you know, and a hair professional and four or five little guys over there, move that to Barry. Um, but that's why the, the task force is working on, this information is really critical to them, because it changes what might ultimately come from the task force.
When's our meeting, Collin Center?
Uh, this June, no, June, January eleventh. They're coming for the presentation. I don't know how, I don't know how far into the present, you know, the final presentation we are, but we've been kind of pressuring them, come on, come on, let's leave with us. So, um.
All you can, but.
I'm sorry?
All you can, and then come back.
Well, I, I don't know, they, they've also gotten all kinds of information about the towns, and they may say, um, something about Barry that we're, that we're not aware of, or something about Harveston that we're not aware of, I don't know, they, they've spent a lot of.
More information than.
I don't know if they do. Now, they, they, they're charging us seventy thousand dollars, right, Ryan?
They are.
They better crank up something.
One of the things that they've done is that they've taken, um, we, we kind of went into this with one focus, it was the square footage and the, and the money, uh, in terms of the task force. Maybe it's time, I was telling Sheil on the way down, maybe it's time we change the name just for presentation purposes, and maybe rename it something other than the Closing Consolidation Task Force, because that's what people immediately get their hackles up when you say closing. Uh, I think part of what, part of the, the conversation that occurred during the World Cafe was exactly this kind of conversation. Instead of closing and, and, and stopping the building from being a school, it becomes more of a community, multiple-use building, where you may have town offices, and you will have kids, and you will have maybe a program for the elderly, and maybe the kids, the elderly and the kids would interact, it was that kind of thing where it would be much more inclusive and, and community-based. So I don't think this is anything that's out of, out of what the, uh, the Collin Center had heard over those.
And I think that the state officials have made it clear to me, and I've been meeting with them ad nauseam, probably from their perspective at least, you know, whining and whining. And basically, they say to the, to rural schools and, you know, Western Mass, which are far worse off than we are, um, basically, well, you, you just don't get to have everything you want and just ask us to continue to pay more money. You have to say that your schools have to have a mul, a mul, a multiple purpose, you have to be able, you have to be willing to move your kids around in a regional school district. And if you're not willing to do anything to help yourself, the fact that, that we won't just hand you more money. And they're talking about fire and police and the whole bit, because we're so parochial in New England, especially in our little towns, where we want our own fire chief, we want our own chief of police, we want, you know, our own pumper tanker, and, and they're just like saying, get over it, because some of our communities, not only the number of kids that are in it, but even the number of people who live there, it's, it's different than it used to be, and, um, you got too many people doing the same job in, you know, a very small square mile. So that's what they, and but of course, when the fire people hear that, they don't want to hear it. The police, they don't want to hear it. Look at what dispatch, I mean, that really made, they made Barry people, they go crazy because they were gonna work with Rutland, and I don't know if you had the same experience here. I was at a four-and-a-half-hour town meeting, um, in Hardwick, where they ended up recalling a selectman, or trying to recall a selectman, because they called where and asked if they could chair ambulance services. We never even got to the, we never even got to the, to the town meeting stuff. We were there for four-and-a-half hours, and Cheryl and I said, well, they're, they're just gonna ignore schools, and then they did. The budget went on the floor, boom, boom, everyone's voted, and we said, well, it was worth the four-and-a-half hours, because they didn't bother us, but, um, so we're very parochial, and, um, you know, this is our first adventure into sort of sharing some space and doing some different things. It is going to make our lives different, maybe not as much as, but if, but it would help, but if getting together and doing some things together means we can provide a more robust educational program for our kids, then I'm all in.
Yeah, I don't, you know, the town doesn't, we don't have a need, we don't have to move today, tomorrow, six months, I mean, this is certainly the first step in an idea, like you said, of sharing space with schools, you know, we'd like to, I would like to keep our school open as much as we can, and I think most people in town, parents who talk to it the same way.
Absolutely.
So if there's any way we can do that by making it a multi-use building, we certainly can. So we don't have a need to move out next month, six months, whatever. We would like to be able to consolidate things and make things easier for our town employees, stop paying out rent, get our library fixed, and, you know, having a building here would help, but, you know, certainly, it's, doesn't have to happen tomorrow.
And so how that provides a more robust educational experience is that it sounds that have more money to contribute, because we don't have to spend on other things, more money to potentially contribute to the school system, and that's how it's.
Well, I think we want to be more cost-effective, obviously, and, uh, you know, whether we be school people or whether we be municipal people, we really want to be cost-effective.
So I think that's a good way to start off the conversation, but we.
What would you like, what would you like me to do? Talk to CAFs, see if they're amenable to, um, I mean, we're in the driver's seat now, we just say we don't want to rent you anymore, and if you'd like to, we'd love you to come to Barry. I can move the others, the other little, little guys. Um, I mean, so I will tell, tell them that Wednesday, because they have to start looking. And, um, or we have to sign another, because we usually would sign three-year contracts, we didn't last year, we signed the one year because of the task force work.
Well, how about you just start off with asking if they're willing to move to Barry?
Well, I think, I think I have to put a little more pressure on them and say, look, um, you know, there's a move afoot in Harveston, we may be, you know, utilizing some shared space, so we may not be, we only are able at best to offer you a one-year contract to, to stay with us, that's it. Because if there's no incentive for them to really get serious about looking at Barry, there's no incentive, so I really want to make them have an incentive to look.
But I have no desire to have forty thousand dollars just to go away from the district.
No, 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 no.
As softly as it can be.
Yeah, exactly.
Or not as softly, but I think that's where I would put it.
I, I agree, because you put the, there's a risk there by just even trying to make it, as you were saying, a little stronger, that they, they may not think about wanting to go to Barry, then they look and go elsewhere, and then you and all of us have lost the forty thousand.
Yeah.
And just listening to everything that we've been talking about tonight and seeing, I think there's still a lot of discussion that has to be made to, not just amongst ourselves and the board, et cetera, but parents, because there's so many in different facets of the community that are gonna be involved and affected by this, positively, negatively wise, that it's not something to make a rash decision based on just the pressure you need to tell CAFs, they may have to be looking for space. To Michael's point, this isn't gonna happen tomorrow, and I don't think it's our, our intent, it's certainly, as a board member, it's not my intent, I didn't come in here thinking this is what we're doing the next six months or by next year. This is an idea because of the several things that we are facing in this town, but certainly not thinking that this is.
Okay.
Only students in sixth grade.
Uh, and across the district?
No, in this school.
How many? Fifty?
Uh, we have two classrooms, so yeah, top school, yeah.
Between forty-five and fifty.
I mean, that might be something we can, you know, markets, you know, gently to, to folks, I mean, it's, everybody wants to keep their school, love those lane, we've got space over there, you know, um, there could be something there.
do for our parents, is we have a really, it's, you know, very good before and after-school program for children, and that's huge to parents, I mean, so, we have one in Barry as well, and we have one in Hardwood as well, run by the same individuals, so, we do have that opportunity, but there's no question, if I move the sixth grade, and I'm a mom who has a fourth grader and a sixth grader, and I'm picking them up at the after-school program, I'm going to try to pick a couple up in Harbison, and then go over to Barry to pick another student up, and that, that will be difficult. So we, you know, I, I know from a, from a parent point of view, splitting siblings is always a challenge for them, you know, if you have, in sixth grade, I don't think there's a lot of parents who would still just leave their sixth-grade-year-old totally alone, I could be wrong, probably not, yeah, so.
Not that they would tell anybody, anyway.
Yeah, well, I mean, you know, for, you know.
Eleven, twelve.
No, no, I mean, and some people say, well, why do you, why do you call a school at night? I said, well, think about it, if you're a parent, and you've got daycare to worry about, and you can get a twelve-hour jump on me calling at five o'clock in the morning, I have made your life so much simpler, and when, when the evidence is all clear from the meteorologist that it's going to be X, then go with X, and do it so that parents can have as much time as they possibly can to arrange, because it's amazing what parents have to arrange sometimes, just to do a delayed start or whatever, so I, that's why we try to do that, so, before and after-school care is critical to parents, and trying to provide ways in which they can access that, it's been a challenge for us, but I think we've done a reasonably decent job in putting together some programs for that.
Good, well, I mean, not to close this, but we actually have a select board meeting that we're waiting to go to as well.
Well, not to you.
Yes, but we very much appreciate this, being walked around here, and it sounds like you'll be able to get back to Rayanne, run that, and then we'll go from there.
Yeah. So I, so I will.
But don't push hard on CAPS.
Okay, okay, don't push hard on CAPS, okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.